Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Thursday, February 6th, it is 10:00 AM and we're here today for a special meeting. All members of the court are present and this meeting is called to order. If anyone will please rise to the invocation, follow the Bible pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Kirkdaw.
Good heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We pray for Godly wisdom and direction. Lord, as we consider the Space Program, Lord, on behalf of the people of Harden County, pray you watch over all our first responders, God. Pray that you protect those who protect us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, sir. Item number three is a presentation on the Texas Property Assess Clean Energy, also known as the Texas PACE program. And if you'll come on up to the podium and introduce yourself, we will be glad to hear your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Charlene Hidinger. I'm the President of the Texas PACE Authority. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We were created to administer this program for counties and cities that choose to create it. We do it as a public service at the lowest possible cost. As of today, we now serve forty local governments, reaching about fifty-five percent of the Texas population. It's a wonderful time to visit with you about it because enough projects have closed and local governments have joined it over the last four years that feel very certain that this good program will continue for a long time. And now that there are projects that have closed successfully, we can talk to you about the various kinds of programs. So, in other words, this is the year, the transition year, I think that we go from a great idea to an ongoing longstanding program. So, it's a great time for you to consider it and we're very grateful for the opportunity to talk to you about it today. We'd love to serve Harden County. So, Judge Affewal advanced the slide, the, one more time? Thank you. The problem that we're trying to address is that every company in nonprofit would love to lower their operating expenses and increase their net operating income or their mission income. And the problem is that when it comes to taking care of buildings and facilities, the cost of replacing the HVAC system, or the roof, or the boilers, or doing anything to make that property more energy or water efficient, is a very expensive proposition. And few businesses have the ability to take money out of the core capital of the organization and put it toward those improvements. So, as a result, they pay higher utilities than they should have to, and they pay a lot more repair costs than they should have to. And so, what happens when, let's just use an HVAC system as an example, the HVAC system is finally sold, they can hardly even get parts. The repair person who's been begging this business to just replace it for years says, "Look at all the energy savings you're gonna get. This is only gonna be great for you in the long run." But if you'll go to the next slide, what the owner sees is five years of cash flow pain. They don't have the money to just pay this, they don't wanna lay anybody off. And the reason that there's five years is that banks wanna be paid back in five years. So, one of the questions I get is, "Why don't you just go borrow the money to replace it?" Well, this is why. And from the bank's perspective, they don't know how long that company's gonna be in business, they don't know how long that company's gonna own that property, and they can't come and take the HVAC system if you don't pay. So, they wanna be paid back in five years, and that's what creates the problem. It's the cash flow because the equipment is expensive and it takes a very long time for it to pay for itself in energy savings. So, if you go to the next slide, what you're being asked to create today is a mechanism that enables a private lender to loan over a long period of time. So, if you spread the installments on this payment out long enough, the savings from the project are used to pay for the project. And that's what PACE is. You're being asked to create an assessment tool on the property in exchange for the economic benefit to that community. So, an example of a non-valent voluntary assessment would be like a street assessment or a sidewalk assessment. So, for example, my parents lived, they were the fifth house on a dirt road, and five houses up was the lot division between Grand Rapids, Michigan, and East Grand Rapids, Michigan, which was the swanky part of town where Jerry Ford was from. So, as a kid, we'd ride our bikes up the street, watch the motorcade go by. So, at one point, my parents got a letter from the city of Grand Rapids saying, "Congratulations, we're gonna pave your road." But it's a dead-end road and five houses are gonna get more benefit out of it than all the other taxpayers, so we're going to assess your property, the economic benefit of this new road, so you pay your share. So, my parents got a tax bill with a road assessment. And the next year, they came back and added sidewalks, so my parents got a tax bill with a road assessment and a sidewalk assessment. I'm not kidding, my parents got a tax bill with a road assessment. They tore up the roads to put in sewers, and at that point, we had to move. But that's, those are examples. So, here, you're being asked to create a mechanism where the property owner can voluntarily, totally up to them, come to the county and say, "We want you to assess our property, the cost of this improvement." And that's where Property Assessed Clean Energy, PACE, comes from. It's voluntary. And we're gonna spread those payments over a long period of time. Private lenders are willing to do this. We're not asking you to do bonds or pay for these, you actually never even would touch the money. But you're creating a mechanism that makes it a low-risk loan for a lender, so they will be willing to loan over a long period of time because the assessments become tied to the property, not the owner. So, the property becomes liable to the local government to repay this financing. It's privately done. And so, it comes with a senior lien on the property, and so, to make this totally free-market, if there's a mortgage on the property, the owner has to get the written permission of the mortgagie before they can access this financing. And mortgages are agreeing to this because it makes sense. And frankly, we know that to make this program really viable for all businesses in nonprofits throughout Texas, that we will continue to work with local lenders to get them comfortable. We hope they will become PACE lenders. That is starting to happen. And once that happens, we feel this program will really take off. It's a long-term effort. So, I wanna give you an example upfront of what we're talking about. This building, the Barfield Building in Amarillo, it's been empty for twenty-five years, pretty ugly, right in the middle of downtown. It is going to be a Marriott Autograph Hotel, and it is changing the locks all around it. It's also going to create fifty-five permanent jobs once that hotel opens. So, what are the benefits to the county from doing this? They're indirect. You're gonna have, it won't matter for you so much, but there's more water when people use less, there's more power when people use less, it makes those resources available for growth. Buildings that are being underutilized or not utilized at all get put back on the property rolls, they become sources of employment. We have been tracking the number of jobs created in installing these projects, but I've only really recently come to appreciate how much we can do in terms of creating places for permanent jobs as well. So, that's pretty exciting. Next slide, please. So, really, these improvements, you still have to pay for them. This isn't a grant program. But what we're doing is we're taking that tower of repayment, which is the cash flow problem, and if you'll go to the next slide, we're just knocking that tower over. So, you still have to pay for it, you're just gonna pay for it over a longer period of time. And when you borrow money over a longer period of time, there is going to be more interest payment, right? We pay more interest on a thirty-year mortgage than we do on a fifteen-year mortgage, so why do we all get thirty-year mortgages? It's because we can afford them. It's the cash flow. That's really what we're trying to do. So, this is a local economic development tool. In 2013, when the legislature adopted the Texas PACE Act, was very respectful of local governments. It said, "You can do this if you want to, here are some things we want you to consider in the process of doing it." It is a hundred percent upfront financing that comes from the private sector. So, the project has to make sense to the lender. It can only be used for improvements to property that are more energy-efficient, or water-efficient, or allow that property to create power on-site. So, solar is what most people think of, but in terms of industrials, there's combined heat and power units, there's microgrids, there are a lot of different ways out there now that people can make power on-site. A lot of these improvements also provide resiliency in tornadoes and other weather situations where you'll lose power automatically. So, here's how it works. In Texas, we have the most robust upfront requirements in terms of underwriting and technical standards, but we also have the most free-market program. And the business community that created this model, that all forty local governments have adopted, that we hope you will adopt as well, it was created by a hundred and thirty volunteers. We broke into five different working groups. It took us a year to create it. It's called PACE in a Box, and all the documents and everything that have been prepared for you are from this program. But the business community, including the lenders, they did not want the local government doing the engineering, providing the lending. So, our role as the nonprofit is only the oversight of these projects. We don't develop deals, we get paid a user fee at closing, and we will continue to lower those rates as volume increases. But the idea here is that the owner of the property should have all the power, so they can decide whether or not to use it. They choose their own lenders, they choose their own contractors, they select the projects that are best for that property. And when they put their project together, and we'll answer questions, we hope to talk to your Rotary Clubs and your economic development folks and your chambers and make people aware of it, but we don't do specific project development because if we're overseeing it, it would be a conflict of interest, so we stay away from that. But all of that, what the project is gonna be, is designed in the private sector. The owner and the lender have an underlying loan agreement, just like any other loan. They negotiate their own interest rates, they negotiate their terms. We don't really get involved in that private sector. We oversee it to make sure it's compliant with the statute. Okay, so then, the owner signs a contract with Harden County that says, "Harden County, please make my property liable to you with this assessment. And here are the installments, this has all been pre-approved, I have my lender consent. I ask you to put a senior lien on this property for this assessment, and I promise to pay. And here's the thing for you, and I know that if I don't pay an installment, the county will collect that past due installment the same way you collect back taxes." So, that is an obligation the county would be undertaking. The statute makes very clear, you get attorney's fees, penalties, and interest, and most counties are just going to add this to their debt collection firm. These are, these would be collected in the same way, so you're not out any money, and the lawyers would pretty much do all the work. But that is an obligation you would be undertaking. The interesting thing is that installments on property stay with the land, so you would not be asked to collect the whole loan, only the past due assessment. If the property is sold, the new owner buys the property and continues to pay the remaining assessments. So, if you've got somebody in a downtown area that, let's say they've owned a pharmacy, the family's had the pharmacy for twenty years, they're getting ready to retire, it needs a lot of work, they can't afford it, what the inclination is, is to just hope to goodness that the air conditioner doesn't die before they sell it and make it the next owner's problem. With PACE, they can go ahead and fix it up, benefit from that improvement at sale, and the new owner pays the remaining assessment. So, we don't have to worry about people feeling like they're over-investing in their property now because they, but it's the same, in any situation, the new owner pays the rest of it off. It's not collected, it doesn't accelerate at sale. Okay, so then the lender signs a contract, where Harden County would say lender. In exchange for providing this economic improvement in our area, you get the right to the stream of payments as they come in. So, you hold the assessment on behalf of the lender. In almost every other state, these go on the tax bill. Our tax assessor-collector said, "We can't do that. We, you know, we have the balanced budget constitutional requirement, we don't have an income tax, there aren't enough property taxes for us to take on this new role, we're not doing it." So, the working group said, "Well, now what?" And one of the banks at the table went, "Let us do it. There's no reason the government needs to service these loans, we can do it." So, the lender contract, the government delegates the job of collecting those payments, installments, to the lender. So, you don't have to do any of that. That saved a lot of money, it saved a lot of time, and the other thing it did that we didn't really appreciate is that if it's not on the tax bill, where the lender only gets paid once a year, then in that underlying loan agreement, the lenders and the owners can really set up whatever payment schedule they want. So, most of them are annual, we've got a couple that are semi-annual, we have two that are monthly. And that's gonna be much more comfortable for local lenders. So, that was a free-market benefit to a solution that was kind of a scary problem to start out with. So, anyway, when you're collaborative and you ask everybody at the table how to make things work, you come up with a really good product. And I think this is gonna work because, I tried to explain it to some folks on the East Coast one time, that we had done this all with volunteers, and they looked at me like I had a third eye, and I said, "This is Texas. This is like a modern-day barn-raising, right? You don't let the government do things for you, you figure out how to do it yourself." And I think that is why we ended up with such a tough program, that's so free-market, which is, people don't understand how you can do both at the same time, but we have done it here and a number of other states are copying what we've done. So, that's, and then, so that's the lender contract and the owner contract, and then the Texas PACE Authority gets everybody through that process, and we file a notice with the county clerk, so this goes on the tax records, or not the tax, I'm sorry, this goes on the property records, so everybody sees what's happening. So, in essence, you're being asked to create a mechanism that does not require any taxpayer dollars, you never touch the money, it does not require any time from your staff, and but you will, by transferring this to an assessment on property, all of the barriers can be overcome if your business and nonprofit community chooses to use this. It won't work for every property, but it's a great tool, and it's really the only economic development tool out there that doesn't cost the county any money. So, next slide. We are, we are now in forty local governments, our slide hasn't been updated yet to include Midland County, which joined last week, and Washington County, which is Brenham, that joined on Monday. So, we'd love to add you, you can see we need a lot more, have a lot more space to fill in. We have, I have to add it up, but I think we still have about two-hundred and thirty counties to go. So, we have, it's a big state. Next. So, just to give you some examples, that upper right-hand corner, that's an old cotton gin in the Deep Ellum part of Dallas, that's gonna be offices. The Elgin General Stores, a feed store on 290, they did a solar project. What's really fun about that is that that is our first bank-funded PACE project in Texas, but it's also the first project that got a thirty thousand dollar grant from the USDA, the Rural Energy Assistance Program. So, a lot of folks in Harden County would qualify for that. And then they got another big grant in rebates from their utility. So, we tell people, get every grant you can get. Some of these are also getting historic tax credits, there are lots of, if you've got a downtown area that has facade grants, this is a great tool to combine with that. So, we try and work and make sure that people get everything that's out there to help lower the cost of these projects. Family Elder Care is a nonprofit in Austin, they help the elderly stay in their homes as long as possible. When they replaced their roof, they bought this small building, replaced their roof, put solar on it, their electric bill is about five dollars a month. So, that means that the money that they used to spend is, part of it is helping to repay this assessment, but the other part of it goes straight to their core mission. So, our first project in Texas was a church, I'm sorry, a house of worship. At bottom left is the Congregation Beth Israel, their school, they needed new air conditioners, they had, they were moving the babies from their day school, from the nursery into the sanctuary because the air conditioning worked, they were really in trouble. But what house of worship do you know has four-hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this work? They can't. So, there are great things that we can do. The new ISIS Theater in Fort Worth, they could use a new name, but that's their historic name, and they've gutted, it was just gutted, and they're putting that back on. So, the first project that, it looks like a pole barn, that is an old hager sewing plant in Corsicana, that was the first time we realized that we could make a difference on jobs. Empty for ten years, got a call from a company in Missouri, Missouri has PACE, said, "We'll buy that building," because this new company that bought it makes cheerleading uniforms, and they said, "We'll buy this building, it's perfect for what we need, if you'll create a PACE program." And so, now there's sixty people working in there. Barton's, so we've done six malls across Texas for Simon Properties, but they did three malls in two counties with one lender on the same day because all the documents are uniform, which is really important, especially in terms of getting local lenders involved. Everybody only has to use, learn with the program once. So, in those three malls, just to give you a sense of water, they, all they did was swap out the faucets. And I don't know how many faucets there are in malls. Two million four hundred thousand gallons of water saved every year, just on faucets in three malls. So, a lot we can do. Upper right-hand corner, that was the first Hilton High-Rise Hotel. Mr. Hilton was from El Paso, that's been empty for twenty-five years in downtown El Paso. When they, they're estimating a hundred and sixty-one permanent jobs when that reopens. So, Kimpton Hotel, that's Fort Worth, and I showed you the Barfield Building before. This is kinda fun. In East Austin, where housing is just desperately needed, PACE was used to buy an old motor court hotel, it's gonna be three-hundred and seven efficiency apartments. And then, the biggest project we've done is the Butler Brothers Building across from City Hall in Dallas, that, but also empty. But what I wanna show you is when they did the Butler Brothers Building, the capital stack that they put together to get money from everywhere to pay for that building, they were short. And this is what we're trying to fix. They were short, so what do you do? You either pay a very high interest rate for a mezzanine loan to build the building properly, or fix it up properly, or you cut. What do you cut? You cut the things that nobody sees, so you cut all the efficiency. And then that building, from then on, has higher operating costs than it should. And so, they found out about PACE, they got rid of the fifteen percent part of their loan, replaced it with PACE loan at six, one point one-three percent. So, in addition to all the savings, the annual utility savings, they dropped the weighted average cost of capital, they dropped their interest rate to buy that building by almost two percent. So, there are really great big potential savings. And I wanna show you, the program really grew last year, and we've done just about everything but healthcare, so I'm very anxious to figure out how we can serve. When you think about healthcare, what is the one way that they could lower their costs? It's really in their buildings and making them more efficient. So, that's sort of a snapshot of where we are and why it's a great time for you to be reviewing the project. So, very quickly, this is kind of a summary of how the community came together to design this program, and we looked at other states, and it was very clear that the business community did not want bond funding, they didn't want public funding, they didn't want the public being the lender, or choosing the lender, or playing favorites in any way. And the idea was, and this was really important for the Texas Association of Business, that when we do these projects, it's your local contractors, your local architects, your local lenders, that this should be creating economy, not just fixing up buildings, but creating across-the-board economy. Okay, next slide. So, if you'll just have, look through those really fast. Program design, that was former Senator, chaired by former Senator Kit Bait Britt. We had, underwriting was chaired by a senior vice president of the Texas Association of Business, the technical standards by Dub Taylor, the Director of the State Energy Conservation Office. But here's what, here's the most important slide. So, from a fiduciary standpoint, I'm gonna talk about that in a minute, but from a financial standpoint, we don't use any taxpayer dollars. The statute says this is a governmental function, you have governmental immunity. The statute also provides personal immunity to anybody working on this, including your tax assessor-collector. And so, there's really no exposure financially. It doesn't affect, because you're not doing bonds, it doesn't affect your credit rating, it's not on your, doesn't have to be in your budget. Okay, so from a fiduciary standpoint, you wanna make sure that this is gonna work, and that your folks using it are gonna be happy with the results. So, you have a local interest in it, which is really important. You shouldn't create it just 'cause somebody from Austin shows up to promote it. We have best practices in consumer protection. We will not close a project under this program unless the savings from the project exceed the cost of the project over the life of that assessment. We won't approve it unless it pays for itself. The other thing is, Governor Perry wouldn't sign this statute unless there was an abundance of consumer protection. Some states require no engineering review, some states require one, the Texas law requires two. An independent engineer has to look at the contractor's work upfront, compare it to our technical standards, to make sure that the projected savings are based on solid standards, and that they're consistent with our program. And then that engineer has to come back and validate after the project is completed that things were installed properly and that they're operating as intended. So, and then, your costs, if the worst should happen, your costs are covered.
How?
The statute says you are entitled to attorney's fees, penalties, and interest.
From where?
From the property. So...
So, if that person goes bankrupt, what happens, what happens then?
Well, chances are, if they, if they're in trouble, they're probably not paying their taxes either. So, you would be going over after their taxes, and it makes sense for the same firm to go after this as well. This survives forfeiture, so the only thing to be collected on behalf of the lender is the past due payment. Whoever buys this property will pay the remaining assessments.
What happens if one of your companies that applied for this and is accepted, what do they ask for a tax abatement through the county, then how do that work?
Has nothing to do with us. If you choose to do that...
Right, it don't have anything to do with you, but it has something to do with us.
Right, and that will be your decision. We would have nothing to do with that.
So, go back. One good thing you have going for you, I will say this, is Mr. Dean Robinson sitting right there, and he's one of the number-one economic development people in our county. And if he's for this, then I'd take that highly, but everything ain't, you know, hunky-dory when somebody comes in here and gives us a presentation. There's always, how many times have y'all foreclosed on something that you...
Never.
Never?
Now, this program is only four years old, but that has not happened. If there is a mortgage on the property, the bank would come in and really pay those back taxes and pay this to keep the county out of it. But if that doesn't happen, and this goes to the courthouse steps, then the local lender, all the risk is on the land. And if, and if it doesn't sell, then that lender doesn't get paid. You don't pay it, you don't take responsibility for that property.
So, the future buyer would have to pay it?
Yes. It would come out of the sale.
Go back, go back again where you said, "No risk to public servants," and you said, "Our tax collector wouldn't be at risk," and you said, "There would be no cost to the county." So, if we do an assessment on this property that, like you said, what, from county employees like a tax collector, what role do they play in this?
The only, the only role for the tax collector, potentially two. The one that you're worried about is what happens if one of these goes bad. And there might be an oversight role or coordination role between the tax debt collection firm and the Texas PACE Authority. What I didn't know is that, under Texas law, the tax assessor-collectors have to go get bonded, that they can be sued personally for their work they do every day. I didn't know that, but that is not the case with this statute. So, they're protected under this statute.
Why, why would they have to be protected? That's what I'm getting at.
If somebody sued, if somebody sued them, they have immunity under the statute.
Why would somebody sue them?
Well, they shouldn't. They shouldn't. Anybody involved in this, the documents say you can't sue the local government, they make very clear there's no recourse against the local government, and the statute makes very clear of that, but that doesn't stop anybody from, you know, do what they wanna do.
So...
They would be dismissed.
How, how would our tax collector know, initially when we set this up, we have a couple businesses is already looking into this, or we wouldn't be here right now, but how would our tax collector know if other businesses come into Harden County and went through y'all, or y'all required to let us know that, what businesses are participating in this? How would we know that? How, how would the tax assessor know what businesses or what property is involved in PACE?
Well, they wouldn't really need to know, but we'll do whatever, if you want us...
But yeah, you put something in there that says we can't be sued, I mean...
If you want us to let you know, we'll let you know.
Well, you...
Generally, we let you know because it's something that people are really excited about, and it makes news, and it's a good thing.
Did I understand that you would be asking the county to put a higher assess, or they would be asking the county to put a higher assessment on their property, and this higher assessment would go to pay for this, is that right?
It's not quite that simple. So, when I say "assessment," I don't mean, what does the CAD say the property's worth? That has, we have no impact on that whatsoever. Most Cads don't look at this kind of work on a building because they consider it to be maintenance and doesn't affect the value anyway, but that's up to them. But... But the, um, the assessment I'm talking about isn't, it's two meanings for the same word, it's very frustrating. I mean that they're getting an economic benefit that they have to repay, so, when I talk about a Pace assessment, I don't mean, what does the CAD say the property's worth? I mean, this building had, or this property has an obligation to you to repay this loan. It's a bi, think of it as a bill or an obligation, it's not, uh, what is the property worth?
But who determines this assessment?
The assessment can include all the hard and soft costs of the specific improvement, they'll always be different, they're unique to that building.
But who determines it?
Um, well, the, the lender and the owner determine how much they're gonna, what they're gonna do and what they're gonna finance. And then we double check it to make sure that it's cash flow positive, uh, and we review the engineering report to make sure of that, so then we, uh, we approve that final number.
So the county has no role in the assessment?
Other than creating it, if you choose to do so, yes, that is correct.
Go back to what you, I'm sorry, Mr.-
Oh, you go ahead.
Go back to what you said about how we collect our delinquent taxes, we would do it that way, why? Explain that part of it to-
Okay. The reason that the local government needs to be involved is only a county or a city can put a, an economic development assessment on a property. So, so when I say assessment, think obligation, put an economic development obligation on the property in exchange for something the county has provided. And what you're being asked to provide is this tool that enables the loans to be spread out over a long period of time. Lenders are willing to loan over a long period of time because the tool you would be creating, i- it improves the success of this loan, right? So, they're, instead of being paid back in five years, they're willing to go out to twenty years or whatever.
Now, on the backside of that, it's attractive because now they move up to senior, senior lien status, correct?
Correct.
So they're on the same equal footing ground as the municipalities that are gonna be collecting.
Right.
Where before, they would be a lower tier collector, right?
That is exactly right.
And so that makes the, that makes that more attractive to them to loan the money.
We know, if these are not, if these fail, that you can cancel the program at any time, right? So, we have every incentive to make sure these are done right. The lenders aren't gonna lend unless their, uh, underwriting is satisfied, they tend to add more underwriting than we require. They also complain about our savings to investment ratio of greater than one that we require, showing that more will be saved than the cost. They don't like that, they would like just to have this inexpensive source of capital, we're fine with that, but, what's in it for the county? Uh, water savings, energy savings, this economic development. Our job is, we have one master in this, and that's you. And our job is to make sure these are successful, uh, and we understand the consequences if they're not. Uh, the lenders are willing to invest in ways they wouldn't invest otherwise because of the mechanism you're being asked to create.
Lenders are willing to lend because, in event that it fails, then where they would normally go through a foreclosure, which would be strictly private, now they can come to the county and say, county, you can collect these delinquent assessments, or you can sell the property, is that right?
Um, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, so they're getting-
So, so they're just a lien holder?
They are, and, um-
We're the enforcer.
And I sound, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And I sound like the church lady to a lot of them because we are tough on the front end. We have requirements that not every other state has, and, um, you know, but-
Yeah, but I'll tell you later who the church lady is.
Anybody's ever watched Saturday Night Live?
Uh, you said in your, uh, four years y'all been doing this, has a county, to your knowledge, ever had to go through that process of, of collecting?
No. No.
Nowhere in the state?
No. I don't think anywhere in the United States.
Where in this process do y'all get y'all's money?
Yeah, that's my question.
We get paid a user fee at closing, right now it's one percent on the first five million, um, half a percent between five million and twenty million, and a quarter percent above twenty million. Um, our floor is two thousand, which is kind of a break even point on transaction, that doesn't do anything for overhead. But, we've made a commitment to serve small business and underserved communities, and so, uh, and then, and then, we also uh, have a residual payment over the life of the financing of eight basis points on the remainder of the principal. I wanna get rid of that as soon as possible. Um, we have this because we need to be self-sufficient. We've lowered the rates twice already, and we've committed to continue to lower them as volume increases, because we need, uh, if this is really gonna be a public service, we need to have a high volume, low cost, low overhead operation. So we're never gonna be huge, uh, and we're gonna continue to lower our rates so we can serve more people. But we couldn't do that until we had some volume, and we have made it to this point, uh, with, uh, the real blessing is the Meadows Foundation, the Rockefeller Brothers Fund, and the, uh, uh, the Environmental Defense Fund have given us grants. We've also received some grants from TCUQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Equality, to try and promote this along the border. Um, and the idea is, uh, that this is so free market and so small government, that it's a model that will work, uh, and it's a model that's sustainable. So, uh, they're, they supported us for, like, the first three years, and now we're on our feet and able to do this.
Okay, I also noticed in the, in your presentation that some of these entities, in order to get the, they get grants and stuff to help them out on these things. Do they apply directly for the grants, or the grants have to be applied for, through the county or through the city or something like this?
They apply separately, and one of the things that we try and do in our education process is make building owners aware of other sources of funding out there that can help them do this. Uh, uh, we really, uh, some of the most meaningful pro, projects are nonprofits. And it's really fun to be able to say, you know, these, these groups will put together these capital campaigns, well, you can't put somebody's name on a boiler. The hardest fundraising they have is for this kind of work, so if they can fund the, the, the stuff nobody sees through a program like this that's going to pay for itself, now that means they gotta have an accountant and a bookkeeper who's gonna save that money and make sure it's there for these installments, then they can put their fundraising dollars into their core mission and, uh, really benefit. So, our biggest challenge, frankly, uh, is that this is the greatest program that hardly anybody's heard of. And you have to hear it two or three times, these are solid questions, so, I would encourage you as a next step to, um, and I'm available, I can come back, or I can work over the phone, but you need to hear from your auditor that this really doesn't impact your budget, and your attorney should look over all these documents, and I'm available to answer questions, but I, no local government creates this without being reassured by your own staff.
Yeah.
Uh, there are lots of other county judges and commissioners that you can talk to now, 'cause this thing is finally, you know, really getting some traction. And, and then you've got a business community that's asking you to do it, so you're, you're really not getting out in front of your own community.
What is the name of the firm that you work for?
Texas Pace of the Lord's-
Okay, so that is, are y'all a five oh one C three, or you're a for-profit, or what?
No, we're five oh one C three.
You're a nonprofit?
We're nonprofit. The original expectation was that local governments would do this, well, it became very clear that that wasn't really possible in terms of resources, and it made no sense to have two hundred and fifty-four different programs. But this was really only gonna work, it would be way too expensive unless we could scale it, and keep the cost down by having everybody share one overhead. Um-
And, and I saw something in one of these, uh, quick slides here that, uh, about building costs for getting a bidder, uh, through this program, the owner of the building or what, they do not have to comply with govern, with government building?
Oh, they have to comply with everything.
Bidding laws?
They have to meet your code, they have to do, they have to get permitting, this is-
I'm not talking about codes, I'm talking about-
He's talking about the, uh, state statutes on bidding.
Bidding, competitive bidding.
Oh, 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 um, uh, because you are not spending any money, you are not required to do a bidding process.
They're not required to get competitive use.
They're not.
Okay.
Because basically they're still private.
See, it's all, it's all private.
Yeah, so they can follow the private industry practices here, right?
They can use it if they want.
Yeah, use it if they want.
I understand-
Now, we really want them to be successful, so, we encourage people to use, uh, folks who've been through our training workshop will come out, and uh, it's not always easy to get everybody to show up, but we want your HVAC folks and your lighting folks and your plumbers and your roofers to figure out how to work together, but also to know this program.
But they're not required to follow the laws that government entities are required to follow?
No, this does not make this an entity program, but you've reminded me of something. Um, lot of local gov, there's a similar program in the Comptroller's Office. It's called Loan Star, L-O-A-N-S-T-A-R, it's plan words, but it's a similar program for government buildings. So, if you're trying to save water and power in your jail, or in a, in annex, or a courthouse, this is a, that is a similar program that is frankly less expensive, and the engineering is all covered by the Comptroller's Office, whereas in our program, it still has to be privately funded, so, that's available to you.
Uh, you already answered the question from your point of view that I have, I would like to ask Matthew or Dean or the judge, one of y'all-
Yeah, we're gonna give a mild opportunity to speak, are you through with the presentation?
Yes, sir, there's some resources there, if you wanna save the, um, just a, yeah, there's just some resources there if you wanna, um, look anything up. And if you wanna talk to some folks who have the program in their local governments, just let me know, I'd be happy to share that with you. One other thing, just to, just, real estate deals take about a year. So you've got some folks really interested in using the program now, even so, it'll be months after you create the program, if you decide to do so, before you'll see any real activity. That doesn't mean nothing's happening. Uh, we'll be doing education outreach, training, everything we can to get people aware of it, but you may not see a project for a while. Um, and that's just the nature of the beast, so I just wanna set expectations, but, when we do, uh, you'll see on our website, we create a, a s, a page for each county, and we track the resulting energy savings, water savings, jobs, so that your constituents will be able to see what, uh, is the outcome of this and the benefit to the county, and then we'll do an annual report for you as well.
I have one more quick question.
Yes, sir.
In some of the other literature I read, it talks about u- us having to contract with a third-party administrator?
That's the Texas Pace Authority.
Okay, and that's something we can do without going out for bids?
Because you are not spending any money, that is not required. Um, you can if you want to, but, uh, it's not required. The only local government to date, uh, that did a bidding process was the city of Dallas very early on, because it was just getting started and they wanted to see what else was out there, so.
Okay.
There, all the projects that have closed in Texas have been under the Texas Pace Authority Pacing the Box Program.
One more, more quick question, the, uh, the lender loans the money to the building owner.
Yes, sir.
Building owner has an obligation to pay the lender back the, uh, annual installment, monthly or however that's set up. But the, the building owner still pays their, uh, annual taxes to the taxing entities, so the county, the city, and any other taxing entity, they still pay their taxes directly there.
That is correct.
So we have no involvement with the lender, or?
The owner signs a contract with the county, and that creates the security interest, and that creates the assessment. The county signs a contract with the lender, the county holds the assessment, because you have to have it in order to be able to enforce it. But you delegate back to the lender the job of collecting the installments. So you are involved, uh, but it's kind of a, a paper trail, unless something goes wrong, and even there-
I'm still not clear on who develops this assessment, who comes up with this amount of the assessment.
Okay, so, the amount can only include the hard and soft costs of energy efficiency, water saving, or creating power insight improvements. They have to be affixed to the property, which means they gotta be there, because that's where the savings come from. So you can't remove them until the assessment's paid off. Um, the cost of all of that, uh, what that's gonna be, and the overall cost of it, is, is something that the lender and the contractor figure out, and then they have to get the approval through the underwriting of the lender, okay? They put that together and they bring that to us. So, we don't set the interest rates, we don't set the total amount, we do make sure that the statute is, uh, so, our job is to double check everything on your behalf. So we don't really set the amount, but we double check it. Um, d, one other consumer protection here is that the length of the assessment, like how, and the number of years that this is gonna go on, cannot be longer than the projected life of the improvements, because they have to be there to, for the savings. So, that's the outside, the longest this can go. It has to be long enough to be cash flow positive, but not longer than the life of the improvements that are gonna be providing the savings. So that, in between that, is it up to the owner and the lender.
Is this a correct statement, that the assessments would then be equal to the cost necessary to make the improvements or whatever, to generate the savings?
Yes, so the assessment includes the actual cost of the project, permitting fees, our overhead user fee, the lenders' fees, um, all of the hard and soft costs to get that project done.
But it had, it's tied to the potential savings?
If that total is more than the savings, then they've gotta cut it back to where it's less, and then figure out some other way to pay the difference.
So let me just ask on this, uh, one that I've got pulled up here for Softex headquarters, the assessment is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, can you kinda tell us, were you a part of that?
Yes, sir.
Can you kinda tell us how the two ninety-one came about?
Okay, so they added HVAC, they put on a new roof, um, they bought thermostats that are, you know, no point in air conditioning that building at night if it's only used, you know, six to eight, or something like that. And then they added, so solar is the last thing. Um, the total cost of those measures, uh, plus the engineering review, the, um, lenders' costs, our overhead, that total of all of that together is two ninety-one. And they're paying that, uh, in an annual installments, I think over twenty years. And the savings are probably closer to three hundred thousand dollars a year. Usually people borrow a little bit more to make sure that they have savings, they have a little cash flow.
Well, it says annual savings is a hundred and ninety thousand. That's kilowatt hours.
Oh, that's kilowatt hours, that's how much electricity they're saving.
Got you. But the two hundred and ninety-one does not include the cost of buying that building and property and all that?
No, that owner, um, that's really a perfect project, because it's, the owner is the single tenant, and they didn't have a mortgage, so it was a real easy thing for them to do.
Shirley, who provides oversight for the Texas Pace Authority, who do y'all report to?
You.
To, to the county?
And, and I always ask that there's somebody that we, uh, visit with, so that if a question comes up, we can get your approval, um, if, i- and so we can, you know, yes, so, we, we report to the local governments we serve.
So what, what laws are, uh, is it just in the Local Government Code, three ninety-nine, that we would use to enforce?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So would there be any language for, like, breach of contracts and stuff like that, that our county attorney would have to review?
Uh, there's a prof- There's a professional services agreement, uh, that, uh, we have no authority to do this unless you give us that authority. So that professional services agreement is, uh, before you, and it's one of the documents we incur, yes, you, you need to have somebody look at all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the court? Thank you. Dean, you want to speak, come on up, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, Dean Robinson, um, I serve on the EDA District Grant Board as a president, and that's kinda what came to our attention, this program. It was implemented in Jefferson County, Bob Dixon had approached me and said, hey, we probably need to make sure that we offer this to the other, uh, region, and so we invited Orange and Harden Counties to come and hear it. Um, what was interesting in, in that presentation, we actually had building owners and the lenders come in and talk about projects that they did in Houston. Pretty amazing to see taking buildings that were not fully rented, uh, with, uh, unbelievable utility costs, to where they could not even rent out, uh, the units because of the expenses, so, they were saying, here's what we saved, and we now have a full building. And, and so, it kinda just got my attention, so we, we had, uh, a meeting in Harden County, and invited others, so, this is the third time I've heard, I've learned everything more than I had heard the other two. So, uh, I just felt like this would be a tool that we could use for economic development. If we have businesses that are looking at existing buildings, they know that they've gotta renovate anyway, they know they have to get some energy efficiency, because they have to get their costs down, and this enables us to do that, this is a good tool. So I would hope that you would really consider this, I think this would be very helpful, uh, not only on projects now, but in the future, because we, we want our county to grow. And we have to have all the tool- And we have to have all the tool, tools that we can, so, uh, I would, I would hope you'd consider doing the resolution. I know the next, you'll have another meeting and public hearing on this, so hopefully others will, when they hear about it, might take advantage of it, so. But thank you.
Thank you. And the sales be EDC is, is, uh?
Well, they're aware of it, uh, yeah, they're, they're well aware.
Support it.
A- as far as I know, I told Christie about it, but she's got, uh, issues with, uh, they are. They are, and, uh, we, we have representatives from Hardin County and Jefferson, Orange Counties on that, so they're all aware of this program and hoping to take advantage of this whenever we get these situations that, that help us.
And you were talking about Bob Dixon with Southeast Texas Rhythm Plan?
Yeah, so, uh, as a part of our programs, with, part of the, uh, District Grant Board, EDA is to, uh, is, part of the strategies is to inform, let's make sure that everybody knows what's out there. So when we put these programs on, we, we invite, uh, officials to come in and EDC people to hear what it is so that they are aware of it and can use it, just like we do, uh, EDA, uh, grants and, uh, all the other grants are out there. We, we have to use everything that we can. Where, it's a very competitive market out there when we're trying to approach businesses to come into our county.
And has still be identified some possible projects over there?
Uh, not, not yet, but again, this is brand new, I don't even know if they really know about it, uh, other than the, uh, director, so we'll, we'll probably have to put one on in each city. I, I mean, just think about each city and the county, what, how this could impact them and their businesses.
That brings up another question, if the county decides to do this, does that automatically mean any, uh, business inside any of the municipalities would have access to this, or does the city?
I believe so, isn't it, right?
Yes, sir, it's a geog- geographic.
Once the county passes it.
Everybody can use it within the border of the county.
And I notice they had some cities that did it, but, you know, if you do it on a countywide basis, you just brought everybody in to the phone.
So the city, city can automatically benefit from the county's actions?
They automatically benefit. It's the same amount of work whether a city or a county does it, so we really prefer to work with counties as we can because agriculture and tech and industry tend to be in the unincorporated areas.
Any other questions for Ms. Robinson?
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dean. Keith Tredway is, uh, everybody here knows Keith and, uh, he is our attorney for our tax collection.
Yeah.
Good morning, Keith.
Hello. And, uh, I'm also, as most of you know, I'm also the Brazos County Attorney.
Yes.
Um, and just, uh, quickly to answer the question you were asking earlier, uh, the one that did go somewhat sideways, it because of the fact that it got resolved inside the bankruptcy, but it did not go to a full foreclosure. That's why it was not, it did not get fully foreclosed on, that's why it's still a perfect record. And so, and just, and the, uh, but I, what I will say is this, is that, um, it's an odd program, but at the same time, it's a program that we work with in a lot of places. We are just on that list, I see Williamson, Brazos, um, Hayes, uh, Bastrop, Bell, Midland, McLennan. Um, and so the reality is, is that we've dealt with this pretty much most of our large places. We have the paperwork to deal with this, um, there's not much of this process that we haven't dealt with except if something really does have to go to the bitter end because no one else has. And so there's no one that really has, and so what I will say is that if you decide to do this, please do go with this company because of the fact that they are the ones we have dealt with. Um, when we have had issues, they have been able to work with us. Um, that bef- and we, Brazos County was, I believe, one of the first three or four that got passed. And so when we did have concerns initially about the fact that the tax collectors weren't covered, um, that she did go back to the legislature and she got the tax collectors added to, she got an amendment to the bill, got it passed so that the tax collectors were covered in addition to the county and the county judge. And so it is a company, yes, and, and so, and the point is, is that, to be fair to, to her company, she has absolutely demonstrated that she will work with us. And so if you do go this route, this is absolutely the one I would personally prefer because as she said earlier, if the county does have to get involved, it will be me. That it's really only on the delinquent end that the county is truly gonna have to get involved. And I would much rather it be a company that I know I can work with and that we've worked with in the past and we've worked through difficulties at various times than it would be that some company that I just have no idea whether they would or they wouldn't. And so, um, beyond that, um, we've seen, I mean, it, uh, it, we've seen in multiple counties where it has worked. And so, I mean, and then we've talked about that one in, but in Brazos where it didn't go quite according to plan, but they did work with us as we took it through that process and we reached a resolution and we didn't end up having the foreclosure on it.
So does that mean somebody else came along and bought it?
Yes.
And so they took up the, uh, mountain zone?
They took over the new one, or they took over the deal.
How are y'all, uh, if it ever does go to that point, how are, how is MBBA able to collect money for a lender when you don't, have you not contacted?
Uh, what we did in that particular instance, I believe she can answer this, is that basically, we essentially did essentially a memorandum of representation where they gave us permission to go to court, not only on behalf of Brazos County, but also on behalf of the lender, so that we could legally go into court and represent everyone and we would be covered. And so, and in the end, we worked out everything in regards to that. And once again, that's the other reason that if, if you do choose anybody, please choose them because we have done that and we know what that looks like, it can be done quickly and the process wouldn't necessarily be delayed.
And Keith, you were personally involved in the one in Brazos County?
Yes, yes, um, me and the bankruptcy attorney for, uh, Terra.
We, we probably will never have to experience this based on what you've said and what she's said, but in the event she went all the way and you started to have them to collect.
Yes.
Where does that money go in your bucket?
Uh, in what sense?
If you're collecting, you're collecting for, not for the county then, for the lien, for the?
Uh, technically, okay, so essentially what you're doing, because of the fact that the loan itself travels with the property to the new owner, what you are truly collecting on is the penalty and interest
Right.
and the attorney fees on that whatever year's assessment. And so if it's, say it was a ten-year broken down where we had the two hundred ninety-one thousand, I think, earlier. And so let's suppose that that thing was essentially broken down to twenty-nine thousand a year. Um, that essentially we would be foreclosed and we was delinquent for one year, we're foreclosing on the penalty and interest and the attorney fees on the twenty-nine thousand, but everything travels with it. And so the end result is that when that stuff comes, it does go, the penalty and interest, et cetera. We do collect on it, the attorney fees and, but the county does get that, to my knowledge. And so, um, it's, but at the same time, she is not wrong and the odds are, if we did that, we would also be collecting on the regular assessment that comes from the appraisal district. And so we're, and so essentially what is happening is there are two bills that are going out essentially each year. You have the bill from the appraisal district or, and your tax assessor for the normal, normal taxes. Above that, you have this extra assessment that they have personally agreed to. And so essentially we would be foreclosing on both of those at the same time.
I guess that was the question I was gonna have to Matthew and, and you probably, uh, just answered it, but technically, a company that participates in this pace program could ask the county for a tax abatement then because that, that money over here is not tied to the appraisal, okay?
Exactly, and so your abatement is on this down here, it doesn't touch anything up here.
Okay.
And we're not getting any money from the assessment. Correct.
And then the abatements are on any new improvements?
Yeah.
Yes.
And they have to, the company has to apply prior to the improvements?
And they can't be competing against another company in the county already established?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Keith. Want to say anything, Charlene? Come on up, Ms. Cook.
I have two few questions.
All right.
But I do feel more confident now that Keith has been down this road with this company. Uh, but, uh, as some of the questions that I have, first of all, there will be a public forum, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, in fact, if we adopt this resolution, that'll happen at nine thirty AM on March the tenth.
So the resolution, will it be adopted first?
If we adopt this resolution today, that's on the agenda, three dash twenty. Uh, the, all it does is it says we have intent to establish a pace program and that kicks off these other, uh, items and to my knowledge, the first item is this public hearing, which is, uh, currently set for March the tenth at nine thirty AM if everybody agrees to that.
What, what day is that, Judge?
It's our next, uh, it's our regular commissioners' court meeting. On March the tenth, it would be at nine thirty before that meeting. Unless, uh, somebody says we need more time, then we will change that.
Well, first of all, you know, I, I know we're all for economic development, I, I'm definitely for that. You know, if we get our tax base up, that's good for everybody. Thank Charlene for coming, you know, uh, I did have a lot of concerns at first when we started talking because the tax assessor collector was not protected in the past. I know they've come a long ways, county judge was protected, the tax assessor collector was not. Keith has informed me that we are now, so thankful for that because I would not be, uh, obviously would not want this at all. So, um, when it comes time, and maybe this is just for the public hearing, but when it comes time for a client that comes in, you know, and as far as that co- talks about, and I believe Commissioner Cooper talked about requirement of notification. You know, we need to be notified that there's changes. If somebody comes in, if somebody leaves, if a new person, a new company approaches Pace or, and we definitely need to be notified that that's taking place. I, I, my question, I don't understand why the tax assessor collector would need to send out that yearly bill. I guess that's the way it is.
You don't.
Okay, so who sends out the yearly bill?
The, um, contract between the county and the lender delegates the job of collecting those installments to the lender. The lenders send them themselves. And if a payment is missed, they are required to send two notices and notify the mortgage lender and then they contact us and we would contact you if there's a problem.
Okay, now, was reading, uh, where it was, the tax assessor collector would send out a yearly?
So, uh, that is a really good point and we prepare notices every year that are just good communication, they go out about the same time as the tax bill, uh, to every property owner, reminding them that regardless of who's collecting these installments, this is money due and owing the local government. So we send a notice every year that says, this is what you owe next year. Just to remind you, this is a governmental assessment and this is what you owe next year. So we send those. On a rare occasion, uh, we've got one property owner that insists that that notice gets folded and put in with the tax bill. If we are successful and we're working on this now and getting HUD to consent so we can use this for affordable housing, that's one of the requirements that HUD will have. If that happens, we do all the work in preparing those and we will ask to work with the taxes as our collector to get, uh, one sheet of paper in the same envelope with the tax bill.
That's what we, that's what we understood, that with our tax bill.
And while we're talking about that, I'm just looking at this item right here that I've got, uh, highlighted, I guess. Because you did say earlier that the county does not get notified if something's going on, but we?
We found that glitch and we've corrected it and I failed to fix that slide, um, that last dark blue.
So we do not enter a contract with the lender?
No, you enter a contract with the lender, that last dark blue slide, we changed that to say, instead of us sending the installment bill, the lender does it.
Okay.
So I've updated that, I should have fixed that.
But, but the county is gonna get notified because we're gonna have to sign a contract if it goes that far, right?
Oh, yes, and, and in the services agreement between your administrator and the county, if you want us to notify you every time a project closes or something, we're gonna do that anyway because it's good news. But, um, you know, you just, we will, our job is to serve you and so whatever, uh, and I really do want to know who, who I can go to, uh, for good news and questions.
I guess that's what I was trying to get at earlier, uh, once we pass this resolution, uh, then the county won't have any, even though we're, we're signing a contract, the county won't have any say on what companies Pace participates with far as, will you come to us and say, what about this company here? We won't have anything to do with that until we sign this right here. I guess that's what I was getting at.
That's correct. Um, the idea here was to not be an imposition on the county. We've really taken the financial risk, we've, we do all of the work as much as we possibly can appropriately. There are two local governments out of the forty that sign the contracts, uh, Assistant City Manager in Dallas and the Tax Assessor Collector in Travis County. That was our first program and he really wanted to run the program and the judge said no, but he signs the contracts and so, I mean, it's a lo- it's a lot more work for the local government that way, otherwise I sign them on behalf of you, but, they all have to meet the same standards one way or the other and we'll do it however you want, whatever you prefer.
Okay, and then, uh, just note that if they go in and they make a lot of improvements, which they are, obviously. Now, that may be considered, that's up to the appraisal, I don't know, the CAD. But if they go in and they make improvements to the building or facility and the CAD raises their assessment, you know, that could take, you know, a, a good length of time for, we couldn't count on those, that new assessment. This is not the assessment of the loan. The assessment of the property for, uh, value. So we, you know, that may not be a quick thing, quick turnaround on that, we need to, you know, keep that in mind. I did have a, a, you know, this was called as a special meeting in that we only had a few days and that concerned me because I felt like we needed to reach out and try to do our due diligence to res- research this. We don't know a thing about it, except for our contact through Keith, which, uh, you know, I'm thankful that we had and he has, has experienced in it and he's answered so many of our questions already. But my, I, we did have the, um, I did think if, um, fifteen regions, which I think there may be more now, uh, adopted, and it just didn't seem like there was a whole lot of permanent jobs over, over the whole state of Texas. If we have two hundred fifty-four counties and if there's two hundred fifty-five jobs that have been created, I'm not sure if those are jobs that are the permanent jobs in those facilities or was that contractors that are already that came in, you know, and that's just another question maybe for a public hearing, I don't know.
I would think they'd be talking about permanent jobs.
Permanent jobs, okay.
Because you could have a lot of contract jobs.
Yeah, there's gonna, you're gonna have a lot of contractors coming in to build, so.
We, we track on the website the actual jobs of getting these programs installed, the projects installed. We haven't, uh, tracked the actual permanent jobs created, we're just realizing how big that is. So the Plaza Hotel, that was a hundred and fifty-one jobs, the Amarillo Hotel, that's fifty-five jobs, the Corsicana, um, uh, sewing factory, that's sixty to eighty jobs. So we didn't really realize we would be creating permanent jobs, but, um, and we haven't. But on the website of each local jurisdiction that has closed projects, we use a D O V formula to try and, um, I'm not sure how good it is, but to try and estimate how many clean energy jobs are created and those are, um, you know, who's gonna maintain the property, who's gonna manufacture the equipment, who's gonna install it, that ki- that kinda thing.
And also this is, uh, as she said, it is filed in the property records, but this is not on the tax roll. So it's not gonna be in budget and, or anything like that.
The assessments you made.
The assessment?
Yeah.
The assessment of the loan of the, it's gonna be filed, that is not tax roll.
Because that money does not come to us.
That's exactly right, so, um, and also, um, I, and I'm sure that Charlene can answer this quick, answer it, or it's on the website or whatever. I was just interested about who the investors are in the Texas Pace Program. And, uh, you know, there, it's a nonprofit, you know, and maybe we could find that out through, uh, and I have a lot of questions for the public hearing, but, uh, we have Keith, it's always have our back, has our back, so I'm very confident in that. Not against this program at all, but, you know, I, we do, it is a concern that we carefully, um, research.
I agree, and that's why I asked, uh, or I put it in the, uh, resolution that when we do have a public hearing, it's a little ways out and it gives us some more time to ask questions of Charlene, it gives Matt and Rebecca more time to do some more digging on the, uh, legal part of it and to advise us properly and then of course we have Keith, like you said, who, uh, is a big help, has answered a whole lot of, uh, questions here today for us.
Well, thank you for it.
Could I follow up on one thing, not, on something you said, but, uh, why, why such a rush to have this public?
That was a request from Mr. Robinson, that we do it.
Is it important to get it done pretty quick for?
It's pretty important. It's, it is important.
So if we sign this resolution today, it just shows that we intend to go further with this, but having this public hearing at the first of March, that's seems okay with, uh, as far as our timeline, just to make sure that we have time to digest all this, do some good research.
And your due diligence.
Right, that's what I mean.
And if we do have interest in, that's going, will we be makin' on who these clients are? Um, and, you know, uh, if you open the pace up, it's open, then it's open.
It's open to everybody.
So, you know, would be a good thing to know who the client is that's coming in and to develop these areas. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper, can you think further?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kirkendall? Commissioner Bell?
No.
Commissioner Robinson? Anybody in the gallery have anything they'd like to ask or say regarding this presentation from the Texas Pace Authority?
I'll move with adoption of Resolution three-dash-two-zero.
Aye, sir. So on item number four, consider adoption of Resolution three-dash-twenty, intent to establish a PACE program, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Cooper, signed it by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? And as far as the public hearing date, is thirty minutes usually enough time for a public hearing for one of these?
Yes, and frankly, most of them are a lot shorter than that, so if you'll let me know how much you wanna hear from folks, we'll be here as a resource, but you've heard my presentation, so unless you wanna hear it again, we'll be here as a resource.
And March the tenth, two thousand and twenty, at nine-thirty is the day we're looking at on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there anything else we'd like to discuss today that's not on the agenda? Move adjourned.
Aye.
That motion by Commissioner Bell, signed it by Commissioner Kirkendall, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.